I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 3rd Board of Supervisors regular meeting, just to let everyone know that I received a message from Mr. Whitson that notified me that he would be, due to medical reasons, attending electronically from Milwaukee, Wisconsin for this board meeting. Welcome back here.
Thank you.
All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move the broadband actions to move it up in the meeting process, possibly the first thing under old business or just prior to we take on old business.
All right, we could do it after public comment as well, if you would.
I'll leave that to the other board members. I just thought I'd make the suggestion that we move it up in the process.
I'm fine either way.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could you, could somebody just repeat that?
There's a motion on the floor to move the Agenda H1 regarding the joint meeting with the broadband authority earlier in the meeting to, to facilitate everybody's involvement. There was a recommendation, potentially the first old business item, or perhaps just after public comment.
I think it'd be great to move it up to just after public comment between Items D and E, right before the inside agenda. That's a motion, I guess.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
It's kind of late now, but I forgot to ask my usual question, were there any additions or additions?
All right, we have the agenda set. Now we can go into presentations. First up is Dr. Grimsley, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon from your Panther family. This year is continuing to progress very well, and we are so happy to usher in fall with some amazing accolades and exciting activities. Our Rapp football team has been on a roll with a 50 to zero victory over Quantico on Friday night. Fifty to zero, y'all. Oh, my gosh. Putting them at third in the region at 4-1. The energy at the games is palpable with an active sideline cheer squad, a growing marching band complement, and more and more fans coming out. This is a great way to bring in homecoming, which R C P S will celebrate on October 14th. Remember, we will also be revealing the results of the survey to name our Panther. The top four finalist names were Prowler, Rappy, Polly, and Rory. So come out to the homecoming game on October 14th at 7:00 PM and find out the Panthers' new name. R C P S celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month during the month of September, honoring the contributions and history of Hispanic Americans. Students learned about key Hispanic historical figures while participating in fun activities like special trivia, over-the-announcements, scavenger hunts, ethnic food tastings, and art projects. This month, we will celebrate Disability History and Awareness Month, as well as Bullying Prevention Month. Starting this week, R C P S will participate in the Sandy Hook Promise Start With Hello Week by focusing on creating a culture of inclusion and connectedness through encouraging students to reach out and include students who may be dealing with chronic social isolation. On October 19th, R C P S will be wearing orange to celebrate Unity Day, a day where all students and staff unite for kindness, courage, and inclusion to prevent students from being bullied. SCA elections occurred on September 8th, and we congratulate and salute our young elected officials as they embark on their journey of civic service. Congratulations to SCA President Liberty Sell, Vice President Savannah Loving, Historian Emma Jenkins, Secretary Emma Brown, and Treasurer Hugh Garner. As I mentioned last month, Commit to Be Fit free community fitness classes and wellness workshops have begun. As before, all activities are offered free of charge for R C P S staff and the Rapp community 18 years and older. New this year, by participating in our classes and workshops, you are automatically enrolled in the Commit Club. Earn points by participating in C2BF activities and trade in points for some great prizes. For every 20 points you earn, you can be entered in to win an amazing wellness grand prize valued at over $500. The class schedule and calendar of events can be found on the R C P S C2BF website. Also, I've included in the October Division-wide Events Calendar for your convenience. We encourage you to join us when available to cheer on your Panthers. They're doing so well. Next week, the school board will meet at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, October 11th, where our principals will be presenting each school's continuous school improvement plan based on data gleaned over the last two years, as well as beginning, the beginning-of-the-year baseline data. Something very important to note, your schools are fully accredited, but more than that, R C E S improved in every single academic indicator for every student reporting group over the 2018-2019 school year. That was pre-pandemic, so they actually improved in every single category. This is an absolutely remarkable achievement and is a true testament to how hard all of our teachers and staff have worked to limit the impact of the pandemic. Last month, I had the privilege of meeting with the U.S. Department of Education Deputy Secretary Cindy Martin about funding disparities in Virginia rural schools. We discussed current efforts in Virginia through COSARS, the Coalition of Small and Rural Schools, to address some of these issues, as well as ways the federal government may also address these concerns through specialized funding support. We are hopeful that this continued advocacy will help during budget development time, and that new funding sources may be available for Rappahannock, as well as other small rural districts with similar challenges. We, as always, we thank you so much for your continued support of our school system, and we would not be nearly as successful as we are without that support. So, thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Dr. Grims. I do. So, that conversation you had with Secretary Martin?
Yes.
How did she seem? Was she receptive? Was she, did she kind of understand where we are?
Yes, I think what was most notable was her surprise at how many small rural districts really do make up states like Virginia and other states, whereas our coalition has 63% of all the school districts in Virginia. Of course, not the concentration of voters in other areas, but that our challenges are very real and different, and that, as she kept putting it, the majority seems to be the minority sometimes in the way we look at these priorities. So, that was very useful information, and hopefully it can carry through in some of the federal work being done to allocate specialized funding to schools, especially through the state allocation formulas.
Excellent. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but my preference would be Rory.
Oh, thanks. I'll write it down.
I've already voted for Rory also.
They're great, they're, yeah, great names. Come out on the 14th.
A lot of creativity there.
I'm wondering if there's a maximum score on the football. 50 is pretty high.
That was amazing. Everyone was going crazy, even in the.
I think they went to a running clock in the second half, right?
Yep. If you hit that 35 points before the same half, you keep it rolling, and when we saw that ticket, woo, so cool.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for the calendar of events.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Doctor Grims. Next, under Presentations, we have Carrie Walker with VACO here to present a wonderful award.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good afternoon. It is a pleasure to be here with you. I'm Carrie Walker. I'm with the Virginia Association of Counties. I'm the Coordinator of Programs and Development, and it's my distinct privilege to present an award today to Rappahannock County for the VACO Achievement Awards. For the benefit of your constituents who may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties, we have existed since 1934 to serve and support your efforts as county officials. We support counties in many ways. First is through our advocacy efforts in the state legislature and also at the federal level. We also serve counties through our educational programs, member services, and communications efforts. In 2003, we established our Achievement Award Program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services and identifying programs that could serve as models for other counties to emulate. Today, I'm proud to present Rappahannock County with its first-ever Achievement Award. The program receiving the award is called Growing Rappahannock's Future with Family Futures. This year is the 20th Annual Achievement Awards Program. We received 100 entries in 2022. Twenty-nine winners were selected from 21 counties. It is a truly competitive program, as 29% of entries were selected as winners. This is Rappahannock County's first-ever, and I'm betting not its last, achievement award. There are four criteria that our judges follow in selecting counties to be awarded. One, does the program offer an innovative solution to a problem, situation, or delivery of services? I am so nervous today. Second, does the program promote intergovernmental cooperation and/or cooperation with local, state, federal entities, and/or private enterprise in addressing a problem or situation? Third, does the program provide a model that other local governments may learn from or implement in their own localities? And fourth is the program based on programs from other public or private entities but represents an innovative approach or customization by the local government. VACO would like to congratulate Rappahannock County again for this excellent program. We look forward to Rappahannock County's 2023 Achievement Awards participation as well. Now, it is my honor to introduce the Chair of the Board of Family Futures, Tom Massey, who will describe this program. Afterwards, we would be so pleased to present the award to Chair Donahue and Mr. Massey and have our photograph taken in celebration. Mr. Massey?
Carrie, thank you. It's a great honor to be here to represent Family Futures, which I've, I'll go through a quick thing on. Most of the board, you guys have been generous enough to let me come in and speak a couple of times, so you understand the program, but also on behalf of Rappahannock County. I think it's a pretty great way to put a light on a program that's, we think, certainly innovative. What Family Futures does, which is the name of the program that is here in the county, is we're dedicated to improving financial education, financial literacy, primarily in the public school. Do it by lots of means, but largely grade-specific, grade-appropriate educational milestones for the kids. And each kid, each child within the program, every kindergarten in Rappahannock County gets $100 in a savings account, and they have an opportunity to earn $20 or at least another $100 every year, in $20 increments. And that's, right now, we've got kindergarten through the third grade, so half of the school, more than half of the school. And our goal is to carry this through high school. When they graduate, they'll have $1,500 or so for which to use for some worthy goal that they choose. And within that is a tremendous amount of education. It'll be worth well more than the $1,500. The real key in this program is the money that they receive, only a small portion is ever given. We've got about, let's see, around a little over $20,000 has been given to the kids. We've got $58,000 in savings for these kids through the, through the, through the third grade, which is tremendous. The rest of that balance has been earned by the kids demonstrating improved literacy. So, I appreciate your recognizing the program. And Kiara, I hope you can hear me, the voice in the room. If you hadn't, we spoke together at the, in this room probably a year and a half ago, and you followed me out talking about Virginia Association of Counties and how they have these awards, and maybe we should get involved. And I didn't know they existed. I don't know if anybody else in the county knew they existed, but if it weren't for Kiara Whitson, we probably wouldn't be here, and they wouldn't have recognized Rappahannock County. So, thank you, and be well.
Congratulations.
You're here.
Excellent.
Now, what's the difficult part is finding the background in this room for a photo. Just face Luke.
Congratulations.
Luke, as part of your rent, you'll have to provide a copy of that photograph to the camp.
All right, thank you very much. We're moving now into the public comment period. It looks like we have a lot of people in the courtroom, as well as on Zoom. We'll stick to five minutes or less. If you'd like to speak, please be recognized. And when you come up, let us know your name and your district. That's for us, but it's also for the people on Zoom, so they know who's speaking. And if anybody's interested, please let me know.
My name is Chris Doxson. I'm resident Castleton in Stonewall Hawthorne, represented by the variable Mr. Van Carney. I will be brief. The essence, I believe, of the comments made at the recent broadband meeting, which became a town hall meeting, were that we've signed a signed contract and are in this high-speed fiber optic broadband project with seven other counties, that no Rappahannock tax dollars will be used, rather funding from various organizations, including the state and feds. Moreover, many stepped up to talk of their personal experiences and hardship, not having access to high-speed internet, much less dependable landline service. And then, of course, the term "universal" was discussed, of which I will touch upon briefly in a bit. I live on Scrabble, have a home office, enjoy high-speed internet with rare disruptions, not even a hiccup. So, some might say I don't have any skin in the game, but the reality is that I do. I'm here to talk about the larger good, of which we are all aware, the critical importance of high-speed connectivity to education, business, agriculture, fire and rescue, and general welfare. Regarding education, many a child suffers, not only through the pandemic online schooling mandate, but also now, in their inability to do their homework in the comfort of home, rather sitting in vehicles along hotspot routes. I remember when my son Hans went to school in Rappahannock in early on Wednesday mornings, when I was off to foxhunt, I'd drop him off at the old post office. He'd happily sit in the lobby, feasting on the inn's gracious donation of day-old breads and pastries, use the inn's internet, doing last-minute homework while waiting for the bus to pull up in Little Washington. That certainly wasn't a hardship, and he loved those mornings. But today, sitting in off-site areas on a regular basis to use a computer or homework is beyond unreasonable for our children. On the subject of impacting the general welfare, recently, a gentleman shared his fear with me over his elderly mother's safety, who lives alone in Little Washington. I suggested he purchase a Life Alert, fool her. He gave me a sad smile. "Chris girl," he said, "Life Alerts don't work here." Volunteering at our Rappahannock food pantry, I can share that so many families, especially the elderly, live without internet access. We place them all in danger and serious jeopardy without the ability to communicate with the outside. We all know this. Yet, some of us get our panties twisted into a knot with the term "universal coverage," as if not having the ability to immediately service every individual in the county right away when this project lifts off should somehow negate the whole endeavor. If even 10 families or 60 or 70 end up with coverage, then it's all worth it. Don't you see that? I think the term "universal" should be scrapped. Let's talk about the vast majority, and yes, there will be families who won't be served, perhaps families who will have a more costly connection if they wait after 12 months to sign up, and they live up a mountaintop on a mile gravel road. Perhaps it might cost more to connect. Perhaps in those instances, the county can step in. Perhaps we need to realize that technology isn't 100%, but the effort to move forward is paramount and should be non-negotiable. Recently, I watched one of my favorite movies, The American President, where Michael Douglas played Andrew Shepard, the U.S. President, and the finale was a speech where he spoke of the serious problems to solve and the need for serious people to solve them. I thought about my time as an ANC Commissioner, serving two terms and representing over 2,000 residents, and I remembered how serious I and my fellow commissioners were about our responsibility. This body before me, you solve serious problems, and I would hope that all of you are serious people. In closing, I'd just like to say that all of us want everyone in the county to have access to high speed. This isn't debatable. What's debatable is the timeline and how quickly it will and can be accomplished. Let's not let the few dictate for the many, and let's not allow those with overbearing loud voices drown out the sometimes silent majority. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
My name is Judith Sarno, and I live in the Hampton District. I am here mainly to say, welcome back here. We've missed your leadership, and while there can be differences of opinion on the Board of Supervisors, it's very important that all of us feel represented. And from being from Hampton, I am thrilled to have my representative back. I will endorse most of what Chris said. I don't know as many of the details as she did, but we need to move forward quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the courtroom?
John Beardsley, Wakefield District. I would also endorse most of what Chris says. And I would, would say to those of you who are so opposed to this project, I just wish I knew what you were really thinking. It, it seems to me that not moving ahead would put us in violation of a contract and expose us to legal risk, and also give us a reputation as a county that it's not safe to do business with. And I've, I've listened to all the objections over the last year or so, and I just don't get it. I don't get the, the objection to the cost, because the cost is coming mostly from federal and state grants and from private philanthropy. I don't get why we would want to put our students in a, in a, at, at risk of not having as good an education as people in other districts. I don't get why we would want to withhold telemedicine from our senior citizens. I, I don't get why we want to make it more difficult for businesses to function here. I just don't understand the opposition. And I think to, to, that we really need to focus on what is the greatest good for the greatest number of people here. And the greatest, is the greatest good to obstruct something because we don't have a precise definition of universal? Is the greatest good, or is the greatest good to provide a critical utility that is essential to, to everyday life these days? Maybe the, the deep opposition comes from some fear that broadband would increase the number of people who want to live here. But, but if that's the case, opposing broadband is the wrong tool. If you want to control growth, then use zoning and planning. Don't use broadband. I mean, let's do the thing that's the best for the greatest number of people. Thank you very much.
Hi, Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. I have a couple of things I want to talk about today. First is the speed issue in Sperryville area along the 211 corridor. I was away on vacation last week, and we were driving along the road, and we came to this little town, and it said, "Welcome to Bristol Mills," and then underneath, part of the sign was, "Thank you for slowing down." And I thought that was such a gracious way of letting people know that there's going to be some speed limitations as they're going forward, but it's still a warm welcome. They did have one of those pedestals where it did reflect the speed you were going, so it did sort of reinforce it, but in a friendly way, which I thought was something that might be nice for us to be able to incorporate. Second item, I was thinking about the little structure that I believe is on county property, and that's the former zoning administrators. And I think at one time, there was talk about, perhaps it would be a perfect place to have public restrooms. And once again, while I was up north, I was in a little town, and they had, it's a tourist area as well, and they had, low and behold, since the last time I'd been there, a building totally dedicated to public restrooms, you know? So, that might be something that we might be able to consider. Since we're supposed to be agriculture and tourism, it would fit into our comprehensive plan, which I know you hear me talk about a lot, and you're probably ready to throw up, but that's the way it is. Okay. Then, another, years ago, when I used to work for a different industry, I would go to various seminars and try to educate myself about the industry. And one thing that stuck with me was a phrase, "Check your ego at the door." And that's, check your ego at the door. Be the best you you can be, whatever group you join. And so, I think that might be something important to reflect upon, that we can all check our egos at the door when we're coming to some of these places to discuss really, really important things. Another point, mistakes happen. Mistakes happen. I think we live in such a mistake-averse society that it's like, oh, horrors, oh, my gosh, Chicken Little, the sky is falling down. Somebody made a mistake. Okay, fine. Mistakes can be made. They can be rectified. And I have a little example that was sort of, I, I tell people about it a lot. When I was working for a newspaper one time, the former manager had managed by fear and intimidation. And this one time, this lady, one of my salespeople, was like cowering outside the door, and I said, you know, come on in. He was, "I made a mistake," but I rectified it. I said, okay, come on in, let's talk about it. And so, she told me what she'd done, how she'd fix it, and I said, that's great, thanks very much. Please don't do it again. And we went forward. And finally, I was able to get that fear of making a mistake out of there. Now, if they did something bad, I did call them on it, and I did fire a couple people. I, you know, let's be honest. I don't deal with people who don't do their job. Okay, so, here we come. My iPad dictionary defines dereliction of duty as shameful failure to fulfill one's obligations. Months ago, the Board of Supervisors, in a 3-2 vote, approved the broadband contract in our county, which will substantially improve our communications ability for many, funded hugely by grants and donations and participation by our county schools financially. Remember that we discovered that about half of our students lacked internet connections during the COVID and had to brave miserable rain and snow to travel to county hotspots to accomplish some schoolwork. Children are our future. They're very important. I, I think we need to give them the best way to go forward. This whole time affected many of them, some failing behind in great accomplishments, plus the stress of it all. It was really hard. And speaking of constituents, constituents, don't Mr. Frazier and Ms. Smith have students in their district? So, they would be their constituents as well regarding this decision. So, now, it's, it's now past time for our supervisors, for all of our supervisors, to honor the commitment made and get the first payment done. If true, it was disturbing to learn that all the supervisors had received an email last Monday morning from Mr. Whitson informing them that he would be attending. For a couple to somehow disregard this information and not attend, thus, I think delaying the first payment that is now past due was not good. However, mistakes can be rectified, and the time to do that is now.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila.
Hello, I'm Sally Haynes from Piedmont. And I'll just add my voice to what we've been hearing, that I would like to see us make, authorize a payment, go forward with broadband as broadly as we can. I have good broadband myself. I'm very fortunate. I tutored a sixth grader through the pandemic, and I became really, through that, acutely aware of how disadvantaged we are in this county and how disadvantaged parents are and students are in particular. So, that's made me a stronger advocate. In the past, I've kind of worried if we're throwing up more towers, we're doing this, we're doing that, what are we doing to the scenic beauty of the county. I sort of hold that number one. And I don't really even know how this broadband is going to be accomplished, because I have not followed the technical part of it. But I do think it's just probably the most important thing we have before us. Thank you. we have before us. Thank you.
Hello, Don Locke, Jackson District. I just wanted to, first of all, I just agree with everything John said back here. I think he did a great job of listing all the reasons what we need this in the county. I just wanted to sort of like, just real quick, do a little in the past history. You know, we've been talking about internet for over a decade here. It's not a new thing that we're just starting now. We've had lots of discussions. A lot of those discussions have ended up with an RFP that we sent out as a county. We didn't get a huge amount of people from that RFP. We got pretty much one that wanted to do business with us and make sure that we got as much internet for as much of the county. And that's what we're talking about. We're getting as much internet as we can for as many people as we can in the county, and that's what this proposal is doing. You know, I shouldn't even call it a proposal because it's a bit of a done deal, because those discussions led to a vote of the board and a vote of the broadband committee that passed. So we agreed to this. We've spent lots of staff time and board time vetting this process and making sure that we get the best deal that we can. Is it perfect? I've never seen a contract that necessarily was, but no, I mean, it's probably got some issues, but not issues with, you know, if we, as was pointed out, there may be some people who don't get internet from this, and I think that it's a lot easier to remedy a few people than it is most of the people in the county. You know, I think that, given that we've already voted to have this, I think it's pretty easy just to, you know, vote to pay our bills and to make sure that we're not reneging on our contract. Just because, just because we can do something doesn't mean we should do something. We can, you know, bang our fists and kick our feet and go, you know, if we didn't get our way, but that doesn't mean we should. You know, we all work together to try to come up with the best solution, and if you don't like that solution, that's okay. Everybody has a chance to have their own opinions. But to try to, at every single point in the road, trying to derail the process, doesn't help anybody in the county. I just don't see how that helps anybody. We don't have all these projects waiting in the wings, and if you derail this one, all of a sudden, we have this other bright shining example of getting internet. This is our chance to get internet, and we just need to seize that and just, you know, just keep on plugging away. You just sign the check. Okay? So for what it's worth, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Capielli, Hampton District. A perfect example of what we're here talking about. T-Mobile has just taken over Sprint, and they've updated. My phone just rang for the first time in how many years in this building? We have had no cell phone service, and the big argument was about cell phone towers, and they're going, the radiation is going to hurt somebody's cows, and the fishing isn't as good. And it's not a joke, folks. It was said in this room. So now we're back to another advancement with technology, which would be the broadband. The Wi-Fi that I have, I'm lucky, I have Starlink, but my phone doesn't get service at my home. But it will pick up on my Wi-Fi, and I can get calls in and out. So while cell phone service might not be great in some of the places like Gibb Brown Hollow and down in Castleton, but if I'm someplace where there's a Wi-Fi signal, I can actually get a phone call. We need this. We need it. We signed the contract. We guaranteed it. I have been in litigation with people over contracts, and a written contract like this, the county doesn't ever like to stand on. It's just going to cost us more money. Even if it isn't universal, it will still get more people to have broadband and be able to do things that they can't do now than what we have. I have grandkids in England. I get to talk to them almost every day by video because of Wi-Fi. There's lots of folks that can't do that. So what you're doing is you're taking away from the people in the county something that they deserve, based upon your personal opinion as to what this contract does and does not cover. Think about all the people that are not going to get it if you don't do this, and what the repercussions would be behind it. Nobody in this county wants to get involved in another lawsuit, especially against an opponent that has more money than the county does and better attorneys. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else in the courtroom? Seeing no hands, I'm going to go to Zoom. If anybody on Zoom wishes to speak, please raise your Zoom hand, and we'll unmute you or Mr. Curry will. Not seeing any Zoom hands. I'll close. Yes, sir, Tommy. Sorry. One more speaker.
Tommy Atkins, Jackson District. First off, I am for broadband. No question about that. But I do have some concerns about the way that we've gone about jumping into this contract. Okay? Now, I have not heard Mr. Frazier or Ms. Smith say that they are not in favor of broadband. I have heard them say they have concerns about the contract. Okay? How many of you have dealt with mega million contractors? I very seriously doubt if any of you have. I have. I have been battle tested. How many of you know what change orders are in a contract? How about changing the scope of the work, unforeseen circumstances? Let me tell you. Contractors have attorneys on their payroll looking for those all the time, and they win every one of them. I've been to court with VDOT, and we have lost every case to a contract. And some of you say, oh, if you make a mistake, all you've got to do is say, "I'm sorry." Sorry. You make a mistake with a contractor, it's millions of dollars, folks. It's not a smack on the hand. So that's the way it works. Yes, I, again, fully support this contract. I mean, not this contract, but the broadband. We definitely need broadband. But I understand these two representatives' stance that they're taking, that they want to have the best they can possibly be gotten. And don't give me this story about, well, it's as good as we can get. No. When you get a contract with a mega contractor, good as you get, it's only going to cost you more money down the road. And this thing about tax dollars, free money from the federal government and from the state government and even from the county government. There's nothing free in this world, folks. That's tax dollars. Any of you that pay federal taxes, state taxes, or county taxes, that's our dollars, any way you cut it. So it's too much of this going on that big brother up in the DC area is throwing away, giving out free money. Doesn't happen, folks. It's our tax dollar. So all I ask of this board is do the right thing and just make sure we've got the contract down as locked tight, as close as we can. I know you may not totally get it perfect, but you can get it locked down pretty close, because every loophole you leave, the contract's going to pick up extra bucks for you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy.
All right. I am going to go ahead and close public comment. At this time, with the change in the agenda, we are moving into the broadband portion of the meeting. Need to call the broadband authority to order. Can I have a motion?
I don't think you need a motion to call it to order. Chair, you can do that.
Well, done that. Agenda. We've already got the agenda set.
You might.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I speak a minute or two?
Yes, sir.
Ask a question or two as well. Could I ask who set the table on Monday, the 26th?
Who set the table?
I set the table.
You set the table, sir. I made a good photo op, but y'all knew as around 12:30, and the chair confirmed by 1:33 that Ms. Smith and myself had already informed that we weren't coming. So all that did was create a photo op.
I guess I didn't know if that might not change.
I mean, there's a lot of times I say I'm going to do something, and sometimes I fail to do it. But when I say I'm not going to do something, I rarely fail to do that. So I already informed y'all that I was not coming, and I did not fail to do that. So I just think the public should know things like this. It really was the, and I have to say it as plain as I can, it was a theatrical stunt. And there was a group of people here that had already pre-planned to come up here and try and intimidate two elected individuals to vote their way, as if somehow, I guess, our moral convictions are as transparent as theirs. But that wasn't the case. But again, public comment today, there's a lot of public comment based on either lack of information or misinformation. And if we go back to August 19th, somewhere, and I don't know who said it first, but somebody on that end of the table had mentioned something about special construction costs. And I challenged that. I said, "That's not in there." But y'all thought it was. And going back to May 2nd, when the majority voted, Mr. Carney?
Yeah.
You rolled your eyes. You don't agree with what I'm saying?
No, it's clear.
Oh. I told you, I wrote a letter. I gave it to everybody, including the media, that that language was not in any of the documentation, special construction cost. But y'all voted for it anyway. And then about four months later, y'all thought that language was in there somehow. And I don't understand that, but it wasn't in there. So anybody that's in the Comcast area that's considered served but can't afford the 4,200 like they want to charge me, or I think it's in excess of $25,000 for some people, and there's a lady out on Rollins Ford Road who was quoted $83,000 for a connection to Comcast, she can't afford that, and all points will not serve her under this pressure. So their schoolchildren are not going to have the benefit of high-speed internet during the next three years because they simply can't get it any other way. And we didn't know that. We did not know that for a fact until Ms. Smith and I had asked y'all to hold up on the meeting of the 19th of September, the payment, so that we could get some information. I believe that triggered the letter writing that Mr. Curry did to the Department of Housing and Community Development that we found out from Dr. Tamara Holmes that the definition of universal coverage was supposed to be determined by the local governing bodies at the time that the VODI application was submitted. We didn't do that, mainly because we didn't know that. It was our first time out doing anything like this of this magnitude. I didn't know it. I don't think y'all knew it. And apparently, our legal advisor didn't know it. So it didn't happen. And now we're finding out, three, four months after the fact, of what we don't have. And there's still folks out there that are thinking today that they will have it, but they don't have it, because we're still getting information. They come up here prepared to say something today, based on a lack of information. You're not going to get it if you live in what's considered Comcast service area. You're not going to get all points, and you probably can't afford the Comcast connection, or you'd already have it. And now we've got $300,000 coming from the School Connectivity Fund to connect these students, and I would say a lot of the bus routes run along the Comcast corridor, because that's where most of the houses are. That's why they came here to start with, when they were Adelphi Cable. So we know that quite a few residences are not going to be served by either one of these in the next three years. And we just found that out Friday. And y'all said that if we didn't have universal coverage, you weren't in favor of it, but you still want to vote for it, I believe. And then we found out Friday that they're not going to come to our aid with the Department of Housing and Community Development, and she sees that to Mr. Carr and Mr. Brandon Davis at the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. So she's letting them know that if we have any complaints at the end of this thing, she's out of it, the Department of Housing and Community Development. So there's nobody to raise any ruckus with. Right now, universal coverage is defined as whatever all points broadband says it is. And that's the kind of questions that we were waiting to get an answer to. Not that we were opposed to broadband, not that we were opposed to children having high-speed internet. We were opposed to signing a contract for $5.9 million that didn't have any information in it. And that's what happened. And yet, some fringe group comes up here and says all these nasty things about people in public, and they were allowed to do that, Madam Chair. And that was very disrespectful. Had we been on opposite ends of the table, I would not have allowed that, that you did. And I don't understand that.
We are free to do what we want.
That's the problem.
Mr. Frazier, I'm going to ask you a question right now. Are you for this project or against it? Tell these folks. Are you for it?
I'm for broadband, but I'm against this project as it was that y'all voted for.
So you're against this project?
No, I'm...
My next question, I won't interrupt you. My next question for you is, do you want to cancel 100% of this project for 2%, 10%, 15%, 20%? Would you?
I don't know. You don't know what the numbers are either.
I don't.
Right. But you don't know what the numbers are.
I won't interrupt you. Mr. Donahue, would you like to read? I'll read it. We got a letter from APB this morning.
Right. And if y'all will let these, wait a minute, sir. I had the chair, I had the floor first.
I thought he was speaking.
No, he asked that he could ask a question. Now he wants to take the floor.
If you don't interrupt me.
Wait a minute.
That's what we'll do.
I haven't finished.
We got, I haven't either.
You just wanted to ask a question, sir. That's what you asked for.
Mr. Frazier, I'm going to...
You're at the floor to, all right. I still have time.
I'll do your rules. We'll do no interrupting. So what I'd like to do is I'd just like to read this email from All Points Broadband that we received this morning. Unless, Madam Chair, you'd like to read it? Everybody got the email this morning.
What time did it come in?
11:40 something. Okay. So Chairwoman Donahue, this is from All Points Broadband. We got a letter this morning from Mark Zaruba, General Counsel. "The NSVRC 2022 Accelerated Fiber Deployment Initiative is one of the most significant broadband infrastructure projects in Virginia history, involving eight counties, three electric utilities, and over $300 million in capital investment. The Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission has informed APB Partners Valley LLC that Rappahannock County did not make timely payment of its initial obligation due to the NSVRC and its capacity as fiscal agent for the initiative in accordance with the terms of the Fiscal Agent Agreement dated as of June 28, 2022. An infrastructure project of this size and scope cannot be financed and completed without certainty that each partner will timely meet its financial obligations. An actual or perceived unwillingness of the county to fulfill its financial obligations may negatively affect the terms on which the initiative can be financed and could therefore have implications for other participating counties. The county has failed to meet its first obligation under circumstances that raise the potential the county may be unwilling, that the county may be unwilling or incapable of timely fulfilling its related obligations in the future. In order to limit the risk to other participating counties and other partners, APB has informed NSVRC..." and other partners, APB has informed NSVRC, which is the regional commission, that after completing design activities, All Points Broadband will not commence construction activities in Rappahannock County until such time as 100%. That's 100% of the county's local matching commitment has been received by NSVRC. If the county takes prompt action to demonstrate its commitment to this project, to the project, and certainty that the future obligations will be met, this sequencing determination will be revisited. The county accepted an invitation to join a regional initiative and related governance structure developed by NSVRC and APB in collaboration with seven other counties. The county has consistently demonstrated a lack of competence in the team and project approach established for the initiative by all other stakeholders. The county should, should select a strategy for bridging the digital divide that is consistent with the county's goals and preferred approach. If participating in the initiative is not consistent with the county's preferences, APB will support a timely request from the county to withdraw from the initiative without penalty. Virginia is expected to receive significant additional funding through the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program, which could be available for the county to leverage in partnership with another provider. The successful realization of this regional initiative depends on the sustained commitment of all partners to the agreed framework and approach. Sincerely, Mark Zaruba." We signed this contract as a majority. Plain and simple. I'm a businessperson. I pay my debts on time. I have never filed for bankruptcy. I don't pay debts late. And I don't intend to start doing that now. I think you all know my position. And over the past couple of weeks, it has been made abundantly clear to me that the majority of the people in my district not only support this project, but they support paying our bills on time. There's an opportunity here to cancel this whole thing, Mr. Fraser. I think this is a good project.
Will you yield the floor, sir?
Not quite.
Yield it back to me?
I will, in just one second. I'm not, I, I am for this project, and I'm for paying our bills on time. There was no theatrical stunt. We rescheduled a meeting so you guys could be there.
Correct.
And you didn't show up, but we're allowed to.
Because the theatrical stunt was the papers on the table, sir.
I won't interrupt you. It wasn't. I, I don't, I'm not interested in political grandstanding. I don't care.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but why isn't it a place that procure today?
I did not interrupt you. You will not interrupt me. I am not for political grandstanding. The one thing, when I ran in the election, the one thing that people told me they wanted when they were not gonna vote for me, and I believed them, is broadband. That's it. Don't elect me next time. It doesn't matter. I don't care. This is what people want. This is not a perfect solution. But it is pretty damn good. And we are on the edge of being a total embarrassment.
No.
Go ahead.
You, you, you receive a letter like that knowing full well that they refused to meet with us for eight months from December. To May was four months, but they wouldn't meet with us again after the September VADI application. And then they say that we have displayed consistently, all we did was ask questions.
Mr. Fraser and I asked repeatedly for folks from All Points Broadband to come back to us to confirm some of the things that they had orally promised us at the beginning of this exercise. And time and time again, the majority of the boards said absolutely not. You all did not want folks to know the board was divided, I should say, the authority was divided on this topic. I still don't know what the rationale was there, but we were told absolutely not. They weren't coming back to talk to all of us. And so, at the end of the day, I'm sorry that we're divided, but we didn't have an opportunity to unite on this by working together. We were told we weren't allowed to resolve the issues because the folks involved would not come back to visit us and take it up again. I think this is very simple for me. I represent Piedmont District. There's a lot of confusion in Piedmont District about what is and is not on the table for service in that district. And I think I've always been healthfully skeptical about this project because it hinges on buildout of the REC backbone. And having lived in an area that receives stimulus money when I lived in northeast Georgia, and knowing how that was billed out and that I would never get the speeds that I was paying for, and I was only five to seven minutes off the main road, I am healthfully skeptical of how this will be billed out back to our folks in the hollows. And then there's the people along the main corridor that should be served by Comcast and Xfinity, but have long drop lines that we were promised by Mr. Carr would also receive the 199 installation fees, that they would not incur special construction and long drop charges. Mr. Curry's estimates are there could be as many as 200 of those homes in our county. So if you do the math, it's usually 5,000 to 25,000, $80,000 a home. That could be 1 to 2 million dollars in charges that people would have to pay in this county to get a connection that we were orally promised would be covered. That's the first reason I sent back on Monday morning about why I couldn't sign on to this. I did a lot of soul searching last weekend to try to figure out if there was any way that I could agree to this agreement. Number one is to get in writing that folks that are in the Comcast-Xfinity region and under the white area in the mapping would be covered at the 199 drop rate as we were promised in person by Mr. Carr at a full meeting of the authority. And I don't understand why leadership of the authority won't go back to Mr. Carr and hold good on his promise. The second thing that I commented would lead me to support this application is that we have no idea about this plan. We just don't know. And if I lived in a different district or represented a different district, I might feel better about it. But in Piedmont District, you have folks that have Xfinity, you have folks in the hollows who are, you may have to drive 20 minutes back in a hollow. How is that gonna be engineered to deliver the speeds that they require to have any sort of viable internet connection? You have the west end of Sperryville. West end of Sperryville has no REC backbone billed out, at least through 2023. That's what their current mapping shows. That is a highway commercially zoned area. I have businesses in that area right now that require better internet service. This is not going to serve them anytime soon. And then we have the 231 corridor. And I realize my peers on this body are tired of hearing me ask about the 231 corridor. But again, if this is to be served by the REC backbone, as we have always believed, and I know Mr. Curry will say there are probably other things that could be leveraged down there, but again, why don't we know the plan? Why are we committing $6 million to something we don't know what we're buying? And I understand people who say this is an infusion of public money into a private company. I say that requires more oversight than ever. I don't think we ought to just give it and hope for the best. That's not a good recipe for success, and I'm sorry if people don't agree. The other thing that I requested when I sent my email early last Monday was that this committee authority consider holding the last million dollars of payment until after the project was complete and rigorous testing could be done to make sure that folks were delivered the speeds and that the percentage of product that was required had been installed. I know that's a difficult ask. Again, this is a, All Points Broadband has projects going on in 20 counties. 20.
22.
22, sorry. Where are we gonna fit in that, in that grand scheme of things? Are we gonna get done on time? Are we gonna get done on budget? Are we gonna get what we paid for? And since we're paying in a good 16, 18 months before the end of the installation, how are we going to rectify it if we've paid in all the money? What's our recourse? DHCD, who said they would be with us every step of the way, has already said, we don't give legal counsel. You're largely on your own. So I'm sorry if folks were offended by me missing the meeting last Monday. I had sent the list, which I hoped folks would buy into and that we could accomplish as a body in order to support a better project. I'm sorry if the majority doesn't feel that makes it a better project, but those were, those, that was my wish list when I thought, what if my peers on this authority are right? And this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. What sort of insurance do I need for myself, for the people that I represent, for the taxpayers of Rappahannock County, for the children of Rappahannock County in order to make this successful? And, and again, there was, there was no interest in negotiating those terms, so I, I just can't support it without some safeguards.
No, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but Mr. Carney, you pretty much summed it up when your first comment was that y'all did it because you could. And that's been the whole problem for the last two or three years up here, is there's been a majority that did what they wanted because they could, even if it didn't make any sense. And that's what's been happening. And that's what this is. That's what I'm just pointing at, is the proverbial this is the broadband package. We couldn't get any questions until two supervisors said, we wanna get one, one or two questions answered. And Mr. Curry, again, that's what prompted a letter-writing campaign of his to All Points, to Northern Shenandoah, and to the Department of Housing and Community Development. I couldn't get that simple question answered for months because y'all could do what you wanted to, and you're gonna do it today as well. And, and I just wish we could get along, sir. For the best, for the best of Rappahannock County, for the majority of the people that we both serve, I just wish you and I could get along.
I think there's a great Rappahannock saying about, we can disagree agreeably. And I, for one, wish that's something that this authority and board would get back to more of.
Well, I feel like we do. I mean, I, I hear you. I just disagree, and I'm doing an amendment.
But, but whatever we say doesn't matter.
There's no smear campaign going around. I'm not, I'm not.
Whatever we say doesn't matter because we could've got those questions answered.
It has nothing to do with me.
Yes, it does, because you didn't wanna do it from, from, you, you took that seat January 1. You didn't sway with us to get the answer to a couple of simple questions.
Okay. Siding with you does not mean that I don't think we should get the questions answered. There's no, you're not tracking that logically. That, I said at the time, yeah, let's get these. Oh, but I also disagree. Yeah, sure, let's get these.
But once you vote for, once you vote to approve it, you can't, there's no point in getting the questions answered anymore.
This is not a design bid bill. This isn't procurement. We're not buying anything.
That's correct.
We're giving money to a private company who's coming into an area that would otherwise say, no way.
Right, but we don't know where he's gonna build either.
Well, hopefully your house.
I think.
No, they're not, they're not coming to my house. We just found that out Friday, a week ago.
I think.
They're not coming.
That's part of the challenge. And to me, again, is, is a red flag is that, you know, this program exploded the year that we applied, which is a good thing, but it also does make us, it does bring to our attention that there will be few people overseeing many projects. And so there will not be much oversight at the state level. NSVRC, the regional commission, we are not a member of that commission, but it's not a body with which we normally do business. So I, I don't know how the oversight is for them. But we're in a, we're in a relationship now with several other counties that we normally wouldn't find ourselves doing business with. So I just think, again, my wish list was all oversight-related, and I hope folks take it for what it is. And I do just wanna say, there's a lot of talk about children here today and seniors. And with Dr. Grimsley sitting up front, I would just be remiss not to say that our school system has done an amazing job through the pandemic, broadband or no broadband. And it really, to me, has been an example of, of, you know, that technology is not the answer to everything. People are. So I really, I really just wanted to mention that too because we are well ahead of many areas in the state that have very good broadband that can't be where we are. So thank you very much for that.
I would like to bring in Mr. Whitson, if he would like to speak. I would be remiss in saying to everyone before you talk, Mr. Whitson, that all seven counties that were in this together have paid their bills, and so far, we're the only one that has not. Mr. Whitson?
Thank you, Chair Donahue. All, all I'll say is, it sent a shiver up my spine when Mr. Carney read that letter out loud. There's so much at stake here, and to put ourselves in this position is incredibly regrettable. And I think we need a remedy today. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, somebody gonna make a motion?
I will. Madam Chair, I'd like to move to authorize payment of invoice one and future scheduled quarterly payments for the NSVRC VADI broadband project contingent on receipt of adequate partner revenue funding prior to each payment.
Madam Chair, I'll second Mr. Carney's motion.
A motion and a second, discussion?
I do just wanna say, there seems to be a lot of misconception about how votes carry on on this authority, which I presume we're operating as the authority to pay these bills. Two weeks ago Monday, when we met, Mr. Whitson wasn't with us, which I'm so glad he's back. And I know we've all hoped and prayed for his restoration to complete health. And I hope that you are well on that way, Mr. Whitson. And of course, we all continue to pray for you and your family in this incredibly difficult time. But on that Monday when we met, there were four of us at this table. I think Anita was here. I don't know if anybody from the Rappahannock News was here. Chuck Jackson was here, maybe, I think. There were literally, I think, Will, Will Lloyd was here. There was a handful of us in this room. And Mr. Carney made a motion. Ms. Donahue seconded it.[1608.81] We were clearly on the way to a 2-2 tie. It was not a good thing. I requested that we do business a different day when it would not be deadlocked, or we would not be having an opportunity to send a payment at all. So I may regret that we aren't able to work through these details, but I am, I don't regret that we were able to wait and hold this business until our peer, Mr. Whitson, could join us again. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Whitson, for being here. Are we going on, we can adjourn the broadband authority?
Well, if the body would believe me one minute, the DHCD has uploaded, has updated or uploaded a new tracking tool for all the 2022 projects. Ms. Donahue actually saw this, as reported, I think Hanover placed a link. It's useful information for board members and citizens to look at. If you go, you go onto that site and zoom way out, it doesn't help anything. You should, ah, you should, well, let's just start that over.
Technology.
Let it do its thing. If you click on the area of our grant, there, it brings up a dashboard and it shows the various milestone points that are reviewed for payment, et cetera. Right now, it shows nothing's done, no field design done. So we should be able to track over time the progress of this project as seen through the eyes of DHCD.
But field design is not till next April, right?
Well, the word we got there was fiber install could start in April. So design would be starting before then. So we'll just keep an eye on this. And you can see 7% expired, it's just a clock. So that link is in the meeting agenda. Now, if you would like, maybe it would be appropriate to adjourn your meeting.
Can we take a brief adjournment?
Let's get the motion and the adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion and a second.
The broadband authority.
Broadband authority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Five-minute recess?
Of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
You know, before I was on the floor, there was no amendment.
Really?
We left off right at the consent agenda. Anyone wanting to make a motion or?
Madam Chair, if you're Whitson, if you could pull the meeting minutes, because I don't think I should vote in the affirmative on those since I didn't attend those meetings. So if we could vote on that separately, I'll abstain.
Sounds good to me.
Motion to approve everything but the minutes.
A second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I'll abstain.
All right, hold on.
Thank you.
I'm getting lost here. You guys are getting ahead.
Sorry, I'm going too fast.
Because Fraser made the motion.
Van seconded.
Second.
Okay.
And Kir abstained.
And Whitson abstained.
Okay, so now we're into appointments.
When we last discussed this at your last meeting, there weren't any, there weren't any candidates had come forward at that time for the Social Services Board. That still remains to be the case relative to an application. However, I understand that there is an individual may have reached out today, but the board provided me direction on whether you want this vacancy notice placed in the newspaper, or you've talked to anybody that we can engage to get an application.
I think we ought to go ahead and advertise for it.
Well, we had the one applicant, but I don't think we were able to make it a meeting, you know, set up a meeting to speak with him.
Okay.
Okay. Yep. All right.
Sometimes we get no applicants, and sometimes we get too many qualified applicants.
Right. I don't think you technically need a motion.
Old business, water resources, looks like we're still waiting.
I sent you an update from Mr. White. He's still working with the Attorney General's Office. Sounds like they have a bit of a backlog. So I don't have any other items relative to water resources protection and monitoring. Although I should say that the stream gauge project, longstanding stream gauge project that is being pursued by the, the, what are they called?
Smith and, Raffalo.
The, why am I drawing them up?
Friends of the Rappahannock? No.
We'll keep going. Rappahannock River watershed.
Commission.
Commission or whatever there is.
Rappahannock River Basin Commission?
I want you to remember that.
Rappahannock River Basin Commission.
Yeah, thank you, Kir.
Thank you.
The River Basin Commission. That project is back on the front burner and has been working. And several potential locations have been identified in the county at VDOT crossing locations and for flood gauges, which that helps us understand the base flow condition of various streams. And so when it hasn't been raining a long time, and then you, and you still have flow, then it gives you an idea of what's happening in groundwater. So at any rate, that, together with a climate response network.
This is the installation of new ones?
Installation of new ones. And apparently, the county provided a payment to the River Basin Commission, maybe in like 2014 or something like that, to help with this project. And it's just been very delayed.
The ones that we have, like at Battle Run, though, they're not part of that system?
We only have the one at Battle Run that's connected right now, and it would be adding some more to that. And it's, it really is a benefit for emergency management for those downstream Fredericksburg Way. If we're flooding up here in these upper reaches, then they know it's coming. But it also helps us from a climate response perspective because you get to understand those base flow characteristics.
And not many people, some people weren't here, some weren't born yet. But 1979, I think it was, the flood in Sperryville, the water, it rained so hard, so rapidly that it, I think it killed a couple of people, swept them off a bridge up there in one of the hollows.
It did.
We had water out in the road at Laurel Mills. Mr. Parrish is no longer here, but he probably saw it himself. The water was out in the road at Laurel Mills, but the road was dry. It was that much water had come downstream that fast.
Yeah.
I wonder too, oh, I'm sorry, mind if I interrupt you?
No, no, no.
It had been mentioned to me, you know, throughout Sperryville, it just reminded me that we have, you know, quite an extensive system of drains because of that flooding event. And there is quite a bit of debris buildup in those drains. Is there, is there an agency that's responsible for clearing those or?
Well, the, the stormwater features along the VDOT rideaways should be maintained by VDOT. And if there are concerns there, we need to bring it to Mr. Nesbit's attention. The other areas, I know there was a planned extension of that into some private yards with easement, and that didn't go anywhere back then.
Right.
I would say those are still a private concern, but the community could potentially, the county.
Yeah.
Could potentially decide that it's a community interest and.
No, I, I'm not talking about the ditch, I'm talking about the drains.
Yeah, those are VDOTs, and we should get with them if they are filled with sand or something.
I think we need to look at those and go ahead and report them, and if they could clean them out, that would be great.
I did report the log that was supposedly in the Thornton up against the bridge apartment. And I saw it read back the other day, and both of us wondered whether it got addressed because neither of us checked.
Well, I wish everything went away that easily.
What kind of gauge is it that, at Battle Run? Is it an IFL? What kind is it?
I don't know much about.
It's a Gage. Because the ones that they're talking about putting at the Hazel are the new ones, correct?
Well, I don't think.
They're optical gauge?
I don't think they've totally determined. I know, I was out canoeing in West Virginia, and I stopped in the middle and sent Mr. Polster some photographs of a gauge. Said, hey, we ought to use these. But it won't be our decision, it's going to be, you know, USGS. And they'll use what they think is, works best for that scenario. But we would have some responsibility over securing location, which is why we have preference for the VDOT bridges.
They've been in a series of impoundments up there several years ago
to stop a lot of flash flooding. They have released, controlled release. And it's good for, you know, I guess, freshwater fishing and things like that. But it was really, stopped a lot of devastating flash flooding.
Yeah, so I expect we'll probably be able to give you a more detailed update in a month or so as that River Basin Commission work progresses.
I do have an update.
There you go.
Forward, when we do our meetings and commissions.
Oh, okay.
Or.
Yep.
All right. Classification and compensation study.
Hand this off to Don.
Yes.
Yes, so within the last couple of weeks, Mr. Curry and I have re-engaged the consultant. We have provided updated information to them in terms of the current list of employees and those employees' salaries. We have relayed the need to include career development paths within the updated salary schedules that they're going to be giving us. And we are currently awaiting a new schedule from them. They have advised that they do expect that we will be able to finish that study and have up to three options for the board to consider at its December meeting. So that's the progress on that at this point.
As I told you before, this is Ms. Jules' primary objective. And she walked through the door, I said, go. This is critical, we need to get it done, so.
Glad your honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
MOU.
I had this on the agenda, I wasn't sure whether we would hear back from Amisville or not. You remember at your last meeting, I presented to you a draft MOU for the radios that were sourced by Amisville Volunteer Fire and Rescue. They received a very large grant. And JP Carter is on Zoom and has chatted that the board and the Rappahannock Chiefs Committee are reviewing the MOU with some minor changes. So you remember, I asked the board to go ahead and approve it with the expectation that some changes might be possible and that would come back. And that was an effort to be able to get it moving quicker if that was needed. It's not ready yet. It sounds like some minor changes are going to be recommended by Amisville. And so we'll work with them between now and your next meeting. If for some reason there's a critical need and timing to get this done faster, then I might ask the board's indulgence to schedule a mid-month meeting to make that happen. I know radios are in hand. And so if we can get the paperwork done, and the logistics, which is a lot, the logistics pulled together for programming and all that can really start in earnest.
How much is the amount of that grant again?
The grant is, I believe, I'll round it to $670,000.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Three quarters of a million.
Yeah.
Really fantastic.
It's actually a different number with a lot of similar digits.
Yeah. Real money.
All right, going into new business, purchase of the radios, back to back.
Thanks for joining us, Chief Carter.
So as you might recall, when Company Four purchased the Tanker, we were in need of a new mobile radio. I expressed to the board at that time that we thought it was important for warranty purposes, et cetera, for the county to own these radios when and if possible. And of course, the AVFR grant is an example of an outlier, which requires this MOU to get kind of cleaned up. So Company Seven has purchased a second utility, needs a mobile radio. We actually already ordered that radio. And then I thought, you know, I probably need to ask the board if it's okay to purchase that out of the Fire Service Fund contingency, which is what you did for the Tanker Four radio. Similarly, Company Two bought a new brush truck. I think it's a replacement for their current brush truck, in which case they won't need a new radio. But we're still trying to find out if there will be an overlap in time. And so I'm asking for your authority to purchase two mobile radios, which would be with an up to approval, as stated in your packet.
Up to $55,000?
No, no, no. $55,000 is the amount that's in your Fire Service Fund contingency.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is it up to $4,000?
Yeah, they're about $4,000 a piece, so it's up to $8,000.
Okay, well, so moved.
Second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
There is understanding that those radios, they're not go with the truck or stay with the company if they're not.
These are county assets.
Yeah.
Now, I will tell you that when we were buying mobile radios, we bought at the end of the old radios. Fokier bought the beginning of the new radios, have had a lot of trouble that have since been ironed out for the most part. Those old radios are not available. So this will be a new radio, new model, and will benefit from all the growing pains that Fokier has gone through with all the firmware updates.
Let's hope that all of that is true.
Yes.
This is a Harris radio?
Yes.
Which used to be GE.
It's been a lot of things. Sell three Harris now, it's the, keep changing.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing. You could take a GE and throw it against the wall, and it would still work, but it may not have been as good as a Motorola.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Whitson, I didn't get your.
Aye.
Thank you.
And he was the second. Scrabble School.
Madam Chair, I asked for this because I was caught a little off guard by a statement made by one of our appointees to the Community Services Board last month. I was actually shocked to find out that there was a group of people that had taken it upon themselves to, to write to National Park Service, or anybody else for that matter, about the Rosenwald School, which is the Scrabble School, that should it be included in some government program, it would preclude the use that we currently have, you know, are using it for. And that would place our senior center in jeopardy because there just aren't that many places that you can just pick up and move something like that to. And I think that we should be totally involved in it, and maybe even send a letter to the appropriate individual in the National Park Service and just tell them that, you know, the governing body of Rappahannock County is the current owner of that property, and we didn't know that this was, was going down.
And unfortunately, I don't have any update on whether those letters were effective. I don't even know what they said, quite frankly. But I tried to provide the background information on the program. I understood that it's kind of a done deal, but there was an opportunity to, to write in and.
It was a done deal that they weren't accepted?
No, well, the list of, of locations was selected there in the link. And then, but there was an opening for comment on that list of selections.
I mean, I have no problem them getting any additional recognition for, for the fact that it was a, a very needed resource at a time in this community. And now is also being used as a different resource. But what I have a problem with is that to, to accept any type of, an award or, or selection to this category, we may be foreclosed the opportunity to use it for something that we're already using it for. And we don't, we don't, we have a need for it. And unbeknownst to us, somebody took it upon themselves to do this. And I just frankly, as a, as a member of the governing body of Rappahannock County, I think that we should kind of put our foot down and say that, you know, that's not the way to operate.
There, there is, just pulled up the link, there's contact information for the person at NPS that is working on this project and a dedicated email, rosenwaldstudy@nps.gov. I'd be happy to send a message on behalf of the board to alert them or make sure they're aware that it's a county asset, and that we'd be happy to partner if we just understood what that partnership meant and didn't mean.
But, but to actually, you know, place a program that we already are using it for in jeopardy is something that we're concerned with.
Yeah.
Maybe we should send it to Superintendent Kenny also.
Yeah, copy to Mr. Ken.
And invite him to come talk to us, because I think it's been about a year since we've seen him. It's nice to see him in December after the leaves have changed, so he can give us all the numbers.
Okay.
Oh, good. And I just, I know I bring this up all the time, well, as often as we talk about it. But I, I do think there's a number of aid that we get for fire and rescue to the park. And I think that we've discussed it before, it's about $80,000.
It's payment in lieu of taxes, and it's about $80,000.
I just think with all of the activity that I see up there every weekend, almost, for fire and rescue, for accidents on the mountain, I, I just think we really need, I mean, everything has gone up in price. I just think we need a little more money for all of the services that we provide in regards to the park. And I think it's been a while since that was done. But I, I know I see, living at the, near the base of the mountain, I see emergency responders almost every weekend going up on that mountain. Sometimes on some weekends, more than once a weekend. And there's a value that we provide. If heaven forbid, when folks go missing, we serve as base camp for search parties.
Absolutely.
And I, I just think that it's worth asking, even if it's, you know, a 25% increase.
It's formula based, and there, I believe there's a CPI modifier in it, and I'll have to go back and look. But you, it is wide ranging. You can think of the number of communities in the country who have national property, whether it's a park or.
Every, every one of our.
Or something near, you know, the DC region. Or a national battlefield. And so I imagine it'll be a very difficult task to, to nudge that formula because of how, just like the LCI sort of question, where surely you can give us just a little bit more, but then it starts unraveling to everybody.
In my time on the board, this went from $24,000 to what it is now. So it does happen, but I don't know that it's kept up with the cost of inflation.
There was a class action lawsuit that they hadn't kept up with their formula, and we got a token amount of money last year to catch up. And then Ms. Jules pointed out to the board that there's a special ARPA fund that was just announced that is, we're on the list by virtue of us having payment in lieu of taxes, so.
I don't want to put any more on y'all's plate, but if we could maybe write just one more letter and address it to the two senators who don't seem to do much, maybe they could.
Counteract.
Some rider on something.
Does that money come directly from the National Park Service to us or through Shenandoah, or how does that work?
Comes from the federal government, yes.
Payment, payment in lieu of taxes.
No, the Shenandoah National Park doesn't give us any money.
No, and the concept is that particularly in areas where there are military bases or there are several military children, et cetera, and they're making use of local government schools, but they don't pay any taxes.
Yeah.
And so this is a payment to the local government in lieu of those taxes. So we have services that we render to Shenandoah National Park land, whether it be firefighting, or search and rescue, or I don't think there are many others, quite frankly. But, or inconvenience by just the fact that the park is there. In some ways, we're convenience as well. And so we're paid federal government in lieu of them paying property taxes.
Yep. Understood.
All right, so we'll, we'll look at pulling together a, a letter to see if there's any appetite to.
$80,000, huh?
Yeah.
20% of our county's in there.
True, but none of the trees go to school and...
Not yet.
You know, the fruit, the juice might not be worth the squeeze, but it might, but it is always nice to talk to our friends at the Park Service.
There was a discussion about cows don't go to school either, but we had a goat that would get on the school bus.
All right. You good, Mr. Frager?
I was just pointing that out, that some goats want to go to school.
What have they gotten?
Our FFA would be very interesting.
I think they had a cow last year, right? And goats.
Yeah, the kissing booth, yeah. Every year, VACO asks you to confirm voting credentials for the annual meeting, which I think is really a formality. I believe your chair is going to the conference. That makes sense. There's a standardized form here to fill out. Anybody on the board can be identified and if no board member's going, you can identify somebody from another county or in the past, you can, you've identified myself because I was going. So I just need to know what names need to go into the blanks in the credential form and we will send that off on your behalf.
Who's going?
Well, I think I had said that I wanted to go, but it looks like I'm not going to be able to now. So is there any way to not, we didn't pay anything for me yet.
We did, but I think it's early enough that we can cancel.
Yeah, I kind of forgot about it.
Yep.
I think I was scheduled to go, but I was saying not going.
Darn.
No.
Chair Donahue, you're going. Would you like to?
I will do it if that's what the board...
I'll make a motion to assign Chair Donahue as the board member of VACO voting credential.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Last year, I think it was a raise your hand kind of thing.
They make it very formal, but I think they, based on the forms that are submitted and then who actually registered, that's how they figure out if they have a quorum or not.
Ah, gotcha.
Got it.
All right. Information reports and correspondence, board committee reports. Building Committee.
I was still under that bug that I had, so I didn't make the building committee and I hope my peer, Ms. Smith...
We, I did go to the building committee. We had a quorum, so we did meet. I will say that we did not have Wiley Wilson join us and we had a lot of public interest at that meeting. We probably had 15 to 20 people show up, which is great. And we treated it more like an informal question and answer period because there was still a lot of questions as a result of last board supervisor's meeting. And so we took it as an opportunity to walk through a lot of the history of the project and to, you know, circulate materials and point people to resources that document what's been going on, but we didn't have any action items. It was, it was more of a community outreach type meeting, which I think was completely appropriate. And I think it was very much enjoyed by both building committee members and members of the public that attended. I thought it was a great meeting.
That's excellent.
I will say that for me, the, the two issues that we didn't get through last month with everything else that came up about the courthouse is, as a building committee member, a lot of the concepts that we have, we haven't addressed what to do with the church out front and I really think we need to figure that out sooner than later because that is, from all accounts, a very viable building and it may be good swing space while we're trying to figure out what to do with everything else. But of course, that's a decision that we have to make as a body and one that we've kind of kicked around for a while. And then the other was the issue of procurement and I know that we've batted that around quite a bit and I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that, Gary.
Well, before we get on procurement, if I could just add something to the building there for context, we've been talking about doing something with that building or not doing something with it for several years now and we haven't done anything with it. And a couple of hundred thousand dollars in that sounds like maybe a bad investment, but we've been month to month in the basement over here in the old Kramer Building or wherever you want to call it now, the Tullis Building, we've spent over a quarter of a million dollars there in month to month rent since we went month to month in 2016. So doing nothing has a cost. Doing something has a cost, doing nothing has a cost and maybe, maybe even a greater cost because we spent over a quarter of a million dollars over there and we still have nothing and we could be told to leave at any time, pretty much. So we really, as a board, need to figure out, like Ms. Smith said, what we're going to do with the old church. And that's, that really is irrelevant what happens with this boundary agreement where we were trying to get out from under the, the...
Deed restrictions.
Deed restrictions, thank you, sir. So I'm just throwing that out there. We've spent over a quarter of a million dollars doing nothing and we've been doing nothing for so long, we're really good at it.
Well, and I would just add that if folks are curious about that building, like, we could probably arrange...
Absolutely.
For people to take a look and borrow some opinions. But Dale Waters, who is probably the most informed of everyone of, on the building committee about old buildings and what needs to be done and how to save them and what works and what doesn't, he believes that is a building worth saving. And it's a lovely old church and I, for one, would like to see it restored. It is an investment, but I think it is a, it's not a foolhardy investment. We would get valuable space at the end of the day. So just food for thought.
Well, so what sort of direction would, do we need to have a formal sort of agenda item for this? Do we need to...
I mean, I agree with you guys. I mean, I know this building really well and it seems like a no brainer to me that we should definitely look at it. It's how we formalize that.
Well, I think, I would say that critical gates that the board needs to go through are, are you going to invest in the building and keep it or not? You know, can you get through that gate? And once you do that, then the building committee can probably start to strategize on what can it be used for in the grand scheme of the campus and, and then try to start getting numbers together on what would it cost to, you know, electric and plumbing and exterior and all that stuff.
So like one of those things where they could, you guys could bring us information about the building next meeting and we can make a decision?
We certainly could, yeah.
I don't know, next meeting might possibly...
Probably early next year, by the way, if things get...
Well, but we could start, we could start the process.
When convenient.
But I would have said, I would say that we probably could have talked about it at the time we talked about the courthouse if the courthouse discussion hadn't gathered quite so much steam. You know, our attention was to actually bring those three things, the courthouse, what to do with the white church and, and procurement, you know, those are...
For the envelope of historic buildings.
Those seem to be sort of our stumbling blocks these days and, and so I just wanted to, to keep moving those two other things along in addition to the courthouse discussion.
It's a rare occasion when the board has allocated funding for projects and we're having a hard time spending the money.
So where are we living?
Is there an option to sell?
I don't know that there's an option to sell, but as bad as we need space because, well, I mean, certainly the board could do that and it may, would be on a unanimous vote at some point to do something like that, but the thing is, both the Treasurer's Office and the Commission Revenue's Office are taking water and we can't really repair those buildings while they use them. And, I mean, I don't think so. I think it's just too much to re, to, to put on the occupants of those buildings right now that they could carry on county business unimpeded while we're doing what we're doing in there. We don't know what we're going to do in there until we get the walls open. And I think it's really too late in the process to then start moving them out. So we need swing spaces. We've been calling it, of course, if we ever build a new courthouse, the clerk's office would, would be almost immediate swing space and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office could be swing space, but we're not there and we're several years away from that. But what we do have is that building there that, again, who knows what a couple of hundred thousand dollars could do and we could move somebody in there. So I don't know. I mean, I think we need to, to do something almost immediately, but I don't know that we can get those, any kind of a ballpark back to you.
And I would say, given the likelihood that the county will be in business forever, I would not advise getting rid of any property that's contiguous with the county.
Right, contiguous. I mean, we did have the property out there at Bank Road and we sold that and I wished we hadn't, but it wasn't contiguous and we would have had to have a vote to move the courthouse out there like we'll have to have to move it to Amosville. See how I slipped that in there again? But anyway.
It'd be also a good space for meeting.
You could have board meeting room.
Yeah, it could be, depending on...
But you need to resolve the, right now, there's one entrance, there's no plumbing.
Well, that's where this good discussion would go. What is, hey, do you, yeah. So, yeah. I'm up for hearing the discussion.
It may be, since we've got Wiley Wilson with such a, a big meal on their plate, maybe we use one of the other architectural firms that we, we have a contract with to take a look at that.
Good.
Just an idea.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to really change the outside appearance of it, so we don't need architectural work as much as we need renovation work. I mean, we have a shell, what can we do with that shell? And with CAD CAM, they could, they could do that with a couple clicks of a mouse and tell us how much space we have that's actually usable.
So maybe a December, January conversation?
Yeah, I think so. That's what the board wants us to do. I think we can get moving on that.
I would love to hear the possibilities for that.
I mean, it's, it's hard to make a decision with no information. I mean, I could say we could renovate it for $250 a square foot, which is going commercial rate, which I don't even know what that really is right now. It could be $500, but, I mean, obviously, it's, it's not like doing a build out for commercial space and a empty storefront. It, it needs renovation, it needs shoring up, it needs quite a few things.
At the end of the day, fixing it is less expensive than build it, than rebuilding and it's, it's a, it's a lovely building and people would probably like to see it cared for.
Yeah, and like, like Mr. Currie pointed out, it's contiguous. I mean, it's right here now and we already own it, so.
All right. Recreational Facilities Authority.
So we had a robust meeting last, last meeting and Mr. George Gardner, who is here with us today, has, we've made some significant, I should say, he's made some significant headway with pulling together a maintenance plan, just kind of pulling together the disparate things that need to happen, that do happen, and basically having an overview of what it is that we need to do, which is a great thing. So he's put that together, which is fantastic, and we'll look at it this meeting, I think it's next week, is it next week? Coming up. So, you know, basically just kind of trying to look towards some of the things that I've mentioned to you folks before about, that have sort of been forgotten. And another thing that we're looking at is putting together a playground committee to look at possibilities for possibly, looking at what we could do with the playground. And so what we'd love to do is maybe get some members of the public involved for that committee, which would be really, really good, so that that committee can get, you know, broad public support and ideas and also avoid quorum issues if need be. So if, if anybody knows anybody who'd like to be or be interested in being on a playground committee, we're going to be meeting next week and we'll start to work towards doing that, which is really exciting just because I feel like there's a lot of energy kind of going into, into, into that and I think that it's going to be really good for the park. And the other thing is, is that, let me think about it, the Dark Skies event, Janey had arranged with the Sheriff's Office that, to facilitate those activities when the park is closed and doing that, or I should say, the Dark Skies event, that there would be a off-duty deputy there and they could go sign up and Crystal Jenkins did it last time and she said it was fabulous and she had a great time and it really, really worked out. And so we will pay them, the authority will, but I think for peace of mind and for continuity, I think it's really going to work.
It's a great idea.
Yeah. So thank you to Janey for doing that and thank you to Crystal.
So, excuse me, if I could ask a question. Do y'all charge for those events, like parking or anything?
No.
Free to the public?
And I, I'll say that I have offered to assist Lieutenant Jenkins, Janey Jenkins, in her role as an authority board member with the bids for the continuation of the fence and that's, it's in my spare time.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that. And we are going to get that, that fence completed here.
I was just checking prices this morning, they went down, so that's good.
Oh, they went down?
For materials.
There you go.
Dude.
Quick, order them now. Public Safety Committee.
I think I attended by them the last one we had, was that before the last meeting?
Yeah.
I don't think y'all was met.
Yes.
And those committee didn't meet either.
Okay. Planning Commission update.
Planning Commission did meet. We had three applications for tourist homes, one from Harmony Manor, another one from down in Rappahannock Lakes and a third from up on Cardinal Lane off 231. The Harmony Manor and Rappahannock Lakes applications were both tabled for additional information on access and roads, as that's part of the application process and that was not complete, so they'll be joining us again in October. The application from Cardinal Lane was moved along with a recommendation for approval to the BCA. We had a request, or there was an application for a variance, the applicant, applicant was not present and we don't, we aren't required to send an opinion to the BCA and since the applicant was not present, we moved the application along without a recommendation to the BCA. We also had a work session on the sign ordinance and got about halfway through that.
Fire Lovey Board, you did meet again, didn't you?
We did meet again and we got approved two, two nine and two five and nine. And we had to, for various reasons, we had to reconvene to get those approved. What we've also done is we've asked them to go back to, Harold Beabout's going to draft up some language to send to the association, which then to send to the chiefs, which is trying to include language that would include some travel and some meals for training because there's been a little bit of, so for instance, we pay for training and we'll pay mileage, but there's no language there for, for instance, if somebody needs to go somewhere and take a train, to pay for that train ticket. So we've sent, we've sent a question back to them, what would you, how would this work for everybody?
It's only reasonable.
What's that?
It's only reasonable. I guess it's an oversight.
Yeah, it's not included. So we did approve Gus, I should say, we did approve a train ticket, which was $186 to Greenville, South Carolina, which I thought was a fantastic price because I cannot believe he got a round trip taken for $186 to Greenville, South Carolina from Colbever, but he did and he couldn't get there any other way and, you know, putting a roadblock in front of somebody to get training, and it was the only place he could get training, seems like we should be able to pay for that or we should include that. That would also include recruitment and retention language in terms of expenditures and community outreach and education, currently, which are not completely spelled out, I mean, at least clear in the bylaws, correct?
Right.
Or the...
The guidelines.
The guidelines, rather.
So the, the plastic fire hats and coloring books.
Yeah, stuff that should be included.
Snacks.
Yeah, or so, yeah, when, I guess, is it, yeah, so those kinds of things.
If you can even drive down there and back to that.
No. Just so that we can approve that kind of thing, it really should be in the guidelines so that we're doing it by the book.
Yep.
Well, I rarely think that things are mistakes or oversights, but I think that really is one.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense.
No.
I mean, if you pay somebody to drive, why wouldn't you pay for...
And I think it's reasonable, you wouldn't want them to fly to Australia, but a train to somewhere nearby is probably smart.
Totally.
It probably needs to be...
And maybe not multiple meals, you know, at the same Outback for 20 nights in a row, but maybe a per diem and that's the discussion that we had.
Right, have to spell it out.
Yeah, exactly.
Sounds good. Yep, all right, thank you. Going into the reports, Treasurer's report.
If you haven't looked already, take a look at the cash graph. You can see a predictable drop this last month. Typically, this is our, kind of our low point, but also there's a large, it's a large school AP, if you look into the details, and there was also the check from the county to the broadband authority for that portion of that payment, so that those two things are using up some of that fund balance and you've seen that in your cash graph. I didn't see anything really else in the reports that caught my eye. We are moving into audit. I mean, audit's been going on, but audit season is coming. Typically, you'll have the auditor report to you in December and I presume that will happen. Again, the schedule based on the state code, so look forward to that.
It's probably too soon to tell for sure, but it looks like we're stabilizing a little...
Yeah, if you didn't look at the, the sales tax, this is one of the first months we've seen where the current year is a little bit less than last year, so we're not seeing those really crazy gains. And so when you see the, those bars be about the same, that 12-month moving total stays about where it is and I think last that was calculated as about a million dollars. as about $1 million, or close to where you forecasted the FY '23 budget. So, if we start seeing a lot of these yellow bars, less than the light blue bar, then we're going to have to look back at the budget and maybe make corrective action. Time will tell.
Okay. Building permits, everything still looks...
Yeah. It continues to be very busy.
All right. Anything in VDOT that we need to know about? Nope. Matters presented by the board. Mr. Fraser.
I don't think I have anything I haven't addressed earlier.
Ms. Smith, do you have anything? Mr. Carney?
I can just add, I forgot to, when we had the Rappahannock Rapidan River Basin Commission, we did talk about those water, the flood meters. And it seems like as, is it the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, VDM?
Yep.
They're the ones that are in charge of this. And they're the ones that have been in touch with you? They're the ones that gave the presentation?
Yes.
And they're these, they're these new-fangled technological things, boxes that are solar-powered, that seem very expensive. But I was led to believe that it's, it's an optical gauge that'll sit on the edge of the bridge, and that they had identified two places.
Yeah, it bounces down to the water surface and back up.
Yeah, in real time, and that there will be a public dashboard, and that the entire River Basin Commission will eventually be connected by this dashboard. Anybody can go on, anybody can say Hazel River Bridge, and watch real time how that stuff is moving. And they, I think that they had, VDM had said that they've been in touch with...
Yeah. Mr. Polster and I had a list and narrowed that down. And Mr. Polster went out and looked at all the locations, made some recommendations. There was one up in Harris Hollow that just really didn't make any sense, and suggested if you want to, if you want to gauge that section of Rush River, then, you know, do it at the, at the 211-522 Bridge, or do it at the Old Mill Bridge, but don't go way up into that watershed. So, I think they accepted that recommendation.
It's a very rare occasion where you would need it up there like '96, I think it was, and then '79 before that.
Right.
And so, he would, the point he brought up was, I guess, what happened, when was that? When in Kelly's Ford, or somewhere around there, bright sunny day, and then within a few hours, the river had just shot up, and there was people on the river.
Same scenario that happened in '79.
Exactly.
There's no rain nearby.
And it was all up in this, in this, in this county, in Madison County, I think, and it just had a huge event here. And so, anyway, that's, we did go over that, so I wanted to bring that up. Just be interesting.
Great. Mr. Whitson.
Thank you. I just wanted to extend my appreciation to Ms. Smith for covering, our representation on the planning commission. And if I could ask a huge favor for maybe the next few months, if, if Ms. Smith or another member of the board supervisor would be willing to attend those planning commission meetings in my stead, it would help me a lot.
I'm perfectly willing to attend as often as you need me to, Mr. Whitson. And of course, if there are meetings, you know, that we both want to attend, if there's, there's not a quorum of the board, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. I'll do my, I'll do my best to reengage. It's just, I'm easing back into things for obvious reasons.
Well, and I know everyone looks forward to the day when you join us for everything all the time, but certainly anything we can do to facilitate your recovery, you know...
I appreciate it very much.
We will sure do that. You bet. All right. I don't really have anything after what's been going on today. I think we've covered it well. We now go into the closed meeting.
Yeah, maybe if we...
Take a quick recess.
Maybe take a recess. Let me reach out to, I don't want to do that. I mean, I'm not asking people to leave. We're going to go into closed meeting, but I need to engage with the legal counsel, let them know that you're about ready to go in. So, I don't know how you want to do that. If you want to read in and then do that afterwards, or... You want to have the public here when you read your motion.
Why don't we go ahead and read our motion?
Right. If there's no action, there's no action.
Wish I could do one thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to wish Mr. Whitson a fast, good recovery.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody want to...
I'll move that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors conduct a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia for the purposes of consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating, negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Please stop and read.
Go. Is he talking to you?
You stopped.
What?
I thought I heard...
Keep reading. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Discussion or consideration of information subject to the exclusion in subdivision 3 of 2.2-3705.6 related to economic development. The subject matter of the closed meeting will be consultation with legal counsel regarding case number CL 20-75, discussion regarding potential economic incentive opportunity to support local business attraction slash expansion.
Thank you. Sorry for the mouthful.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Rollcall?
Yes, please.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And I also.
All right.